Hello. And then I'll have our candidates up here be introduced by Henry Wolfe. Before I turn over the mic to Henry, I do want to give a plug for West Shore's Business and Economics Summit that's next Wednesday. So if you haven't signed up for that, it's going to be a really great event from 1:00 to 4:00 following a cocktail hour where we have Wendy Block from the Michigan Chamber as a keynote speaker and we have other officials that'll be there as well as a lot of networking opportunities with stakeholders. So we hope that you can sign up for that. It's very important for talent attraction and retention to our community. So with that, I'm going to introduce Henry Wolfe. He is with the Northern Michigan Chamber Alliance and I'm one of the partners in that group and I'm happy to have him. We let him come back for the second year, so don't disappoint. So here you go.
No pressure. Thank you, Stacy, and thank you, everyone, for being here. Like Stacy said, my name's Henry Wolfe and I'm the Director of Government Relations with the Northern Michigan Chamber Alliance, representing 16 chambers of commerce and economic development organizations from U.S. Ten North, the Northern Lower Peninsula, and in the Upper Peninsula as well. So great to be back and excited for the forum. There are a couple of -- just one thing that I do want to point out, that though there are seven different districts within Manistee City, everyone will have a chance to cast their vote for each of the candidates. And then in terms of -- or I should say, after the election is over, the seven city council members will elect a mayor and an inter-council decision. So just want to make sure that we're clear on that. And very excited that we have two of our candidates here and I know that it's not easy to get up and do these, so if we can give a round of applause to our -- We've got your Linda Beaton and Wes Smith. So what I'm going to do, we're going to get right into it, but I'll hop back to my post back there and then we'll begin with our first questions on economic development. So thanks again for being here. Just want to make a couple of other things clear here, too, that each forum participant will get two minutes for a brief introduction first. And then as we talk about our -- as we get into the questions, each participant will have 90 seconds for each question. Follow-up questions are allowed at your discretion. And when your time is up, you will hear a ding. Let's try that one more time. There we go. Now, no excuses, I know everyone heard that one.
Trying to keep it light.
Again, thank you to our candidates for being here. And I'll start with Linda, if you can give a two-minute brief introduction.
This is Anna. Okay, I've lived in the city. I have lived in the city of Manistee since 2010. I moved into the county with my former husband into Arcadia in 2002. We decided to go our separate ways, which happens sometimes. I had stage-three cancer and that was kind of a game changer at the time. And everybody, or the two of us decided that we wanted to go separate ways with no hard feelings, and that's what we did. I was happy to move into the city. I miss being in the city. We lived in the village of Oxford beforehand and I moved up here because it was a beautiful county to come and visit. My educational background is fairly varied. I grew up in Bloomfield Hills. I did go to Adrian College. Didn't like it. Didn't like it. Also went to Northwestern University as, you know, an honor student, I guess, between my junior and senior year. So I had a good college experience, but then I -- but then my father really wanted me to go to Adrian and that didn't work out so well. I wasn't 18, could not make that decision legally without his help because I wanted to really go to Eastern with my best friend, you know. So I was very lucky in that no matter what I did, I was able to always find a job. And I've had a variety of different jobs in Oakland County. So I took a lot of classes. I have, gee, I have three-and-a-half years' worth of college credits that probably aren't any good right now because I probably have aged out of those actually having that credibility. But I did take a lot of college classes along the way. I've always been interested in government. I took a year of Russian history while I was high school because it was the first time I wanted to try that. And it was extremely hard. It was considered an honors class, so I could really help my grade point out of it, obviously. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Wes?
All right, let's see. My name is Wes Smith. I'm 49-years-old. This looks like a dating website or something. Anyway, 49-years-old. I currently am employed by the State of Michigan. By trade, I'm a Michigan State Police Trooper, but I have not seen the inside of a patrol car in probably almost 14 years. I did start my career here at Manistee in 1998. And like every young person goes to their first post or their first assignment, my goal is to get what I needed and then get out. Let's go find the action. Again, that was 25-years ago and I'm still here. I fell in love with the community. And I lived in the city for four or five years and then moved up to Wellston. My wife Tracy's in the audience. We've been married about 15-years and have a 14-year-old as of Saturday, daughter who goes to Manistee schools. And I could think of no place I'd rather be than here. And my goal for this community is to make sure that my grandchildren want to come back here. It's -- Manistee's a good place now. I want to make sure it's a good place in the future. And I'd love to be a part of that. I want to be able to make my mark on this community as I have been for the last 25-years in public service. So that's my two-minute spiel.
Thank you, Wes. And that's a perfect segue into our first category and our first question, which is about business growth and economic development. What is your vision for the city of Manistee in five-years?
My vision is to see, you know, Manistee, I think we're in a good spot now. We're at a precipice to where things are looking good. I say I can see nothing but forward progress that's been happening. You look at the Hampton Inn as far as business opportunities, you look at the Golden Steg, you look at Outsider, you look at Black Lotus, all these new businesses that are opening up in town, it's great to see. What we need to make sure of is that those businesses continue to be prospered and are supported through the next five-years. It's great when they start out and they have stars in their eyes and hey, we own the business, but it's a few years down the road. So what I want to see is I want to see the businesses be even stronger than they are now and the businesses are stronger, the community will be stronger. I'd love to see some, you know, some talent, some young talent come in, some young entrepreneurs come in and push Manistee to the max level, which I think we are right there. We just need a little bit more push to get there.
Linda, what's your vision for the city of Manistee in five-years?
Well, I do think, I do think we're on the right path. However, I do hear from a variety of people, as I have over the past almost eight-years, and there isn't a lot for young teenagers to do, who don't really need adult supervision. And I hear that a lot, there's no place for them to gather. And I started looking over my past, and I'm a lot older than Wes. I will tell you that in the 1950s, that was the birth of malls. And so when you go into the 60s and the 70s and the 80s, if you were a teenager, where did you hang out? Where'd you have your parents drop you off at the mall? And there were great places to go inside the mall that were for kids and movie theaters, et cetera, et cetera. Obviously malls have died out. They've gone into disfavor in a lot of areas. But we really need to understand that we have new generations coming forward, the Generation C. People would probably like to see something that is more in their line of vision. And I don't know what that is without asking them. So it's important for us to reach out and encourage them to talk to us because I want to build a community that has enough variety to keep all generations here. So that is my vision for the city of Manistee.
Thank you both. Still on the topic of business growth, how does the city of Manistee play a role in talent attraction? We can stay with Linda.
You know, it's really funny. I think a lot of people are very interested in the city of Manistee. We have certainly had a lot of good press as well as some negative press, that is for sure. I think the Chamber is doing a pretty good job of reaching out to different, you know, different people who are interested. I know the first line that they need is Mark. If they're interested in some sort of a business, they talk to Mark Miller. I don't know how else to build on that other than to say that we probably need some more marketing. I'm looking right at a person who knows all about marketing. So I think that's kind of the answer. We have to actually go out and advertise for people to come here and to give them a feel about how great it is and how good the resources are here. So that might be one way that we need to go.
Thank you. Wes, how can Manistee play a role in talent attraction?
I think one of the biggest parts that we need to play is, like I talked about earlier, the vision for the next five-years, we have to make sure we attract young talent and we have to attract entrepreneurs. I think a good way to do that is, in years past, and again, I'm just coming into this, so I don't know all the ins and outs, but from the community members I've talked to, Manistee has been at times a little bit difficult to do business with, get business going, a lot of hurdles. What I'd like to see is a lot more collaboration and communication between the Chamber of Commerce, the incoming business, as well as the city. You know, it's, we need to forge a path forward, an easier path forward for all businesses because you get more business, you get more young talent, you get more young kids, and it all builds upon itself. It's like building a foundation first. You have to have that, you have to have that first.
And Wes, we'll stay with you on this one because it's a great point and how important, especially Northern Michigan, collaboration between other units of government and economic development organizations can be. So what specific ways can the Chamber better, or excuse me, can the city better collaborate with other units of governments and economic partners like the Manistee Chamber of Commerce?
I think really, just the word collaboration, communication, there needs to be, you know, there are certain, let's see. Everybody's got a certain vision and sometimes agendas get in the way of those visions. If people, whether it be the Chamber, whether it be the candidates, the city council, the businesses themselves, if they really just put the, you know, the focus on Manistee, on the city, what's the best for Manistee? Manistee at this point needs investors. When I say investors, it's not just money. It's people that want to put their time, people that want to put their kids through school here. Investors, not harvesters. I don't want to see people come in or companies come in and get a bunch of benefits and take our resources, which is our talent, and then leave. We don't need that. We need people that are invested in this community. And I really think that's what when the city and the Chamber realize that and understand that, which they do, and that's all done through collaboration and communication.
Linda?
I think we need to build things that are going to attract people. We need to, honestly, we need a daycare center. I would love to have a 24/7 daycare center here. We absolutely need to be able to provide that because so many parents are working. A lot of people are working because they don't have a job with benefits and they need to have two incomes. So it's imperative that we really think about those things that would encourage people to stay here and to raise their children here. I don't know what the answer is. How do we, how do we get somebody that wants to build a daycare center? I don't have the answers for that. But I think it's a screaming need and we really need to start thinking about how we're going to do that. I hear from parents all the time that have told me, "I'm having trouble finding a daycare provider." I've heard immediately from Bill Gamble when he moved here, how difficult it was and he was going all the way up to Wellston for his first born. And I think that's pretty telling when you have a brand-new city manager who can't even find a, I'm sorry to take hide you, Bill, can't find a provider within the city limits of where he's working. So bearing that, we also need, again, to make sure that we're providing activities and places for people to gather with, that are young, those young teenagers. They do need a little bit of freedom. They don't need constant adult supervision, but they need to do something. Thank you.
And that's such an important point on childcare. So we'll stay with Linda on the childcare topic. What are your specific ideas for some strategies on how to create more childcare opportunities for the people who live and work in this area? It doesn't have to be too specific, but even any general things you think that the city could do to help be engaged in bringing more providers to the area. I don't want to give away the answer right now, so I'll stop there.
Do you have the answer, Henry?
Good comeback.
Actually, I think it's going to depend on collaboration with the major employers in the county. I think that would be a start. If they could combine their voices and talk about the need for childcare, that would really help a lot. And that would be the collaborative effort that obviously my opponent has actually already alluded to. But on that level, I know that they need, their workers need childcare and I know that this would be an asset. Now, whether that means that they're going to try to help us with funding for that and we need to find some grants, there's got to be something out there that we can grab onto that will get us a start. I do know that I have heard a planning commission meeting last Thursday, that there's a proposed 22-unit market-rate apartment building in the works, probably. It's going to be on the north side, so I'm a little bit excited to hear more about that. I don't know if that's going to help with the childcare problem, but at least it helps with the housing issue.
Thank you. And Wes, the same question, what ideas would you have to help create more childcare opportunities for the people who live and work in our area?
Yeah, childcare, that's the research I've done for this event. Childcare and housing are two at the top. One of the things that I looked into and I talked to several community members and reminded me of was there is a program called TriShare. And what this program does, it has grant funding and has, Linda, I'm not going to call it by coincidence, it's Linda, et cetera. There is a ton of grants out there available, but we have to have the knowledge and ability to go after those grants and to write for those grants. And what the TriShare is, it's basically dividing the cost of childcare to thirds. Granted, it does not give us a building, but as far as, you know, the cost, a third of the cost is paid by the grant, a third of the cost is paid by the actual company itself, and a third of the cost is by, you know, the parent or the family. Because I believe it's $1.2 billion is lost, was lost last year in revenue and tax revenue from the state of Michigan because of childcare issues, childcare absences, and things like that. It was 1.2 or 1.1 was by the state by, was because of, 1.2 was the financial loss by the companies, you know, like 600,000 or 600 million, sorry, was by the state. So it's a huge issue. There are grants out there. We just have to, you just have to look at and into them and go after them, but there are options.
Well, you both are giving me perfect segues here, so we'll move on to housing, too, and we'll stick with Wes on this one. As many of us know, housing is one of the number-one barriers to talent attraction in Northern Michigan and in Manistee as well. So what are your ideas to help create more housing or long-term rental options for the people who live and work in the area?
Housing, the last study that was just released, we, for the city of Manistee, we need 600, over 600, I believe, 603 single-unit housing, you know, housing units. That's how far in the hole we are, over 600 units. And for a community this size, that's huge. As far as ways to, you know, ways to combat it, the city has a lot of vacant property or a lot of property that's maybe fallen into repair, whether it be, you know, city-owned or city, I guess city-owned is the best way to put it. If there could be, again, I use this word, collaboration and communication with perhaps a, you know, an investor to build some houses. There's no quick fix. There's no quick fix to childcare, there's no quick fix to housing. That's similar to a program that I believe in Skeaton County or the city of Skeaton had, to where they networked with their, you know, actually an investor or a builder and utilizing city properties, whether they sell or however the, you know, get down the weeds on that, but they're making headway with their housing issues. Like I talked about the foundation, how are we going to bring people here if we don't have places for them to live? How are we going to have them places for them to live if they don't have places to have a family and raise their kids and go to childcare? And then we talked about, you know, the services, you know, after that, where they can do, what they can do with the teenagers. We've got to build the bottom person. We've got to get that foundation first, and that is attracting talent and entrepreneurs and housing.
Thank you. And Linda, also on the topic on housing, what was, what are your ideas to help create more housing or long-term rental options?
Well, I'm going to give you some examples. I moved up here from Oxford and I was on the Oxford Village Council. Now, Oxford is a very small village, but it is right in, it's right in the northern end of Oakland County. So there are a lot of people that, to them, it was a bedroom community because we all worked, you know, either in Troy or down in Detroit or someplace. So one of the things that happened while I was there was a developer came in and they decided to land adjacent to the north park of the village of Oxford, which was all vacant. They bought all, of all that property, they put in 4,000 new homes. That was their plan and they accomplished that. But at the same time, that attracted Meyer to decide to build across the street, which was really M-24. What happened after that? Well, they built Meyer, they started building the homes, and then somebody said, "This is really dangerous, but, you know, the people who are living in these houses try to cross M-24," which is a four-lane divided highway, "to get over to Meyer. What about kids? How are they going to get over there?" So we decided that we needed a pedestrian bridge and Dale Kildie got us $2 million to build a pedestrian bridge, which saw a great part of the problem that we had in transportation of those people going over to Meyer. So it can be done.
Thank you. And as I'm sure a lot of people know, the Manistee Chamber had worked with the Northern Michigan Chamber Alliance at the state level to create a new set of incentives that, or options that locals could use to incentivize the development of workforce housing. But we understand that there's a lot that goes into the housing issue and a lot of it comes down to local government. Should the Manistee City Council proactively alter zoning ordinances to incentivize the development of affordable housing? And we can start with Wes.
Read a question one more time, please.
Should the Manistee City Council proactively alter zoning ordinances to incentivize the development of affordable housing?
I think anything that we can do to make housing, make the housing situation easier and happen quicker, I would absolutely support altering. You know, obviously there's more questions that would have to be asked, but would I entertain it? Absolutely. Because we both agree, housing is a huge issue and it really needs to be, it's been kicked down, kicked down the road, the cans have been kicked down the road a little bit too long. We really need to figure this out and really start to move forward instead of just talking about it. So absolutely, absolutely support that.
Linda, should the Manistee City Council proactively alter zoning ordinances to incentivize the development of affordable housing?
I think we, I think we're being a little short-sighted by doing that, only because there's so much vacant land around us. And I think that's why I wanted to use my Oxford example of the 4,000 homes, because it's really hard to envision having a huge impact on finding spots to build houses within the boundaries of the city of Manistee. So even relaxing some of the current zoning, I don't think that's going to solve the crunch and it might actually upset some neighborhoods. I know that there was some pushback on doing, turning single-family homes into duplexes. But I also will remind you that we have an ordinance committee and it would probably start there. We could have a work session and have a discussion about changing our ordinances, but at this point, to be honest with you, between in our boundaries, we don't have a lot of space left for a big housing development. I mean, we may be able to squeeze 12, you know, I hate to say this because the Jefferson property has been under so much debate, but if you had, say, anything between 10 or 12 houses there, it's not really going to solve our housing crunch yet either. I know it's a step, but if you're talking about 600 needed homes, that's a problem. It's not going to fit here. So we need to rehab the existing stuff that we have to make it more attractive. And I think that's about the best way we can go. I hate to sound like this, but I know that there's plenty of room around us to build and they would come to our city.
Thank you. Also on housing, and we can start with Wes, would you support negotiations with developers to build housing or homes that would be favorable to the completion of the project? For example, offering publicly-owned parcels at reduced prices to achieve housing goals?
Again, I think any stone left on the term that comes to helping the housing issue is a mistake, so I would support that. One of the things that I would, what I don't want to see is when a developer comes in, starts on a project and then, you know, for whatever reason, financial reasons or whatever, leaves it, you know, leaves it at some point. I think there needs to be some definite benchmarks and if those benchmarks aren't met, there needs to be some very, very clear ramifications. You know, we're talking about, you know, kind of the elephant in the room, it's tax incentive, tax incentives, excuse me. And we need to make it clear that if these benchmarks aren't met, the tax incentives really quickly, you know, are in jeopardy. Because we need to hold the developer's feet to the fire to make sure that they're not just giving us slip service, but they actually do have the best interest in the community and not just, again, being investors, not harvesters.
And Linda, I can repeat that question. Would you support negotiations with developers to build housing or homes? For example, offering publicly-owned prices, excuse me, publicly-owned parcels at reduced prices to achieve housing goals?
I actually put together a list of all the vacant properties that were in the city of Manistee when I was still working as a realtor for Colwell Banker. And I brought it to the city council and I said, "You have all this vacant property. What are you doing with it?" And a lot of them just wasn't buildable, but on the other hand, there were some. The Renaissance Park, that's off of 55, we did a lot split on that. I had some reservations about that, but the lots weren't selling, they're five-acre lots. Would a development fit there? Very possibly. I mean, we could look at something like that. It isn't a township, but it is our property. So those are the kind of things we could potentially develop into more housing, but it's not really close to downtown. It's close enough by car, you know, I used to drive 30 miles to work and 30 miles home. So I think it would be an ideal location for something like that. There's not a lot within the city. I am excited about seeing development in Tyler. I think that's really going to help us. Those children are going to go to school in Manistee. So those are all pluses and they're going to visit our downtown because we certainly are developing a lot of property downtown for people to go and eat and have a good time. So I think there's opportunities when you don't feel, shouldn't be so despondent or have any despair over the fact that we don't have any available, we'll ruin here, but it is outside, or it is outside our boundaries.
And staying on the topic on some of those incentives, if there are properties that could perhaps be rehabilitated in the city of Manistee, one of the new tools made available as of last year was the creation of a neighborhood enterprise zone, which is a property tax exemption for the rehabilitation or for the development of residential housing within an eligible area. As a council member, would you support the creation of a neighborhood enterprise zone?
I believe we already have one. The lower Maxwell Town area. We've already proved. It is coming before us, but absolutely.
Good answer.
Well, I know it's been under discussion, so that's why I was thrown off a little bit by your question.
Okay, thank you. Well, we can hop to the next one and we can start with Wes. What other communities do you think have innovative approaches or ideas to tackle economic development, business growth, or housing issues?
Yeah, when I, even earlier when I spoke about Skeaton, that's the one that comes to mind to me, to where, you know, they develop the partnership with the, with the builders, between the city and the builders, you know, to utilize those underutilized, to utilize the underutilized, you know, property in the city. They've done a great job. You know, you look at any community around us, we can, I always say that Manistee is a diamond in a bowl of diamonds. You've got Luddington, which has got some great, great things that we can pull from. Frankfurt, I mean, talk about the downtown that's vibrant. Frankfurt, I mean, talk about the downtown that's vibrant. Traverse City, well, you know, further up, you know, up the coast. There are so many different, you know, things here that, that we can, totally lost my train of thought. Repeat the question.
No, sorry. No, no, I think that.
That happens during council meetings.
Exactly. No, but you were answering the question perfectly in terms of what are you seeing from other communities that you think is an innovative approach to tackling economic development?
Absolutely. You know, a small thing, but food trucks. Luddington has in front of the, I think it's the Mancino's building or parking lot, well, food trucks. I'd love to see that sort of thing in Manistee. We have some, we have the cool Honda shaved ice truck. We have the ice cream truck that my daughter always, always likes to, likes to flag down. Anything that we can take out, and that's something we'll have to go out in the community to find out. Hey, what do you see when you travel that you really like, that you could bring here? As I said, we're, we're a diamond in a bowl of diamonds and let's, let's make it shine even more.
Thank you. And Linda, what are you seeing in other communities that you think have innovative approaches or ideas to tackle economic development?
That's a good question. I think, honestly, I've got to tell you this, I'm going to share this, and I, my, my daughter and my son-in-law and my six-year-old, my six-year-old granddaughter were here over the summer and my granddaughter knows an awful lot. And she really wants me to tell everybody that we need a splash park. So it's on my agenda and you're the first guy, yes, that's hearing this, but I don't think it's a bad idea because she has a park next to her subdivision in St. Louis, Missouri, that has a wonderful splash park. And I've been to it and even I like being there. So those are the kind of perks that I think we need to start seeing to set us apart. And I'm lost now, too.
There's a lot to choose from there.
No, I don't think there's a lot we can do, but again, I, I think we need to always try to balance each, the needs of each generation because I think we're going to miss opportunities if we don't listen to all the different generations in the city.
Thank you both. Now we'll move on to incentives for development and we can start with Wes. Our area has many historic buildings that have deferred maintenance or need major upgrades to, to bring a building back to use. Do you support the creation and approval of incentives to support redevelopment and the creation of economic opportunities?
This is another yes. Anything that we can do to bring this, you know, historic buildings and more, make the downtown more vibrant, more attractive is absolutely something we should do. But again, I'm all about the benchmarks. You know, I know there are several buildings downtown that have been kind of half-done or started and, you know, it's kind of, it's kind of, it's a joke around town. Hey, there's a couple of buildings. That we can't have because that's, you know, that, that's, community sees that, the young talent sees that, that are coming in, what is the first thing they're going to do? They're going to come down River Street and we want them to see vibrant, new, beautifully maintained historic buildings? Absolutely. Alpine Chocolate House, the Vogue Theater. I mean, just, just a few of the things downtown that are, are just, just great to see. Even Manistee Beverage. I love what they've done with that. It's, it's not like, you know, in the neighborhood, it's a neighborhood, you know, party liquor store, beer store, beverage center, but it's not like, you know, 7-Eleven. I love how they've kept it, the motif, and I think the, you know, the committee's doing a great job doing that. But absolutely, we need to, we need to support that, we need to encourage that because if not, the residents are just going to call in more and more disrepair and then what we have, even less than what we have now.
Thank you. And Linda, would you support the creation and approval of incentives to help improve those historic buildings?
We've been doing a lot of those for the last seven years. We are, we are open to that and I think we should stay open to that in order to get economics, development, economic development moving. We have given incentives to developers. We give pilots, we've done a lot of things to encourage development. It's not unusual for us to grapple with that. And I will tell you, you get a lot of pushback and that is, that is one of the hardships of being on City Council. You're trying to do the right thing, you know it's going to help. People don't understand how the taxes work. They don't even understand that, for example, the Hampton Inn is bringing in more taxes right now, even though they don't have the building under fully taxed, being the land uncapped, is bringing in four times as much tax money as the property itself with the old motel on it. So these are things people don't understand and it's really hard to communicate with the public, to get them to see that. They just think we're giving away their tax dollars. That's an, that's an age-old problem that we have with getting the, getting, granting the tax incentives. So I'm not opposed to it, but there will be hurdles to go over.
And so you did vote in favor?
Absolutely.
Thank you. The next question requires a little bit of context. The Chamber recently created a matrix of incentives that could communicate the area's willingness to work toward development. It can also be used to decide whether a development deserves tax incentives. Do you support the use of tax abatements for economic development and do you support the passage of the matrix? No takers?
Yes.
We can save one.
Yes. We might, we might not approve every property that's on it exactly, but absolutely, we need to really be thoughtful about it. We know that it's hard to get developers here, we're not a big community, we're certainly not showing a great growth rate in our city. So that makes it even more challenging to try to get somebody here to take, to take a look and say, wow, yeah. So I think that's, that's just part of our job. It's the hard part of the job sometimes, is to be able to vote for something like that and also have to deal with a little bit of pushback from the public who doesn't understand or is irritated that they're getting a tax break and maybe some other business owner who's been here 50 years didn't get a tax break.
Thank you. And Wes, do you support the passage of the matrix?
Yes. From what I understand, the matrix, it is not a, an unthought-out document. There are very specific benchmarks that need to be met, very significant capital investments to be made by, by who's, who's going to get those quote-unquote tax breaks. They have to be certain, depending on what, what zone, not what zone, you know, which parks you're in, you have to, you have to support a certain number of full-time employees. So yes, there's, you know, maybe a certain tax break, but they are, again, investing in the community and that's absolutely what we need to support.
And I think the education on these incentives is so important and with respect to tax increment financing and other incentives that can be used to increase the property tax base in the short term as well as the long term. Wes, how would you use your position on the City Council to communicate the value of these incentives to the public who aren't always convinced at first of their value?
That's a great point and Lynn and I, I think are on the same page. Our, our job would be, her job is, my job hopefully will be to, I tried, to communicate that to our constituents and that's really what our job is. And whether it's a phone call, you know, at different, talking to someone from Dog Park, it's, to us, when we look at it on a piece of paper and think about it, it makes sense. Okay, I invest this, my taxes are frozen, but then once I sell it, the taxes go back up. We have to look at, we have to communicate with our constituents that without that investment, without that person's investment, again, what would that property be? What would the, you know, would it go to foreclosure? Would it become a blight issue? Not that we have any of that in Manistee, right? Oops. But it's something we definitely need to, you know, as, as council members, as community members, even now that I've done the research into this, even not as a, even, even if I don't, I'm now known to where I can, I can talk, you know, reasonably and be educated about it. So that's really something I'd support.
Well, Linda, now I know how to adjust my question. How have you used your office in the past and how, or how would you plan to communicate the value of these incentives to the public?
We do actually approve opas for a lot of obsolete, obsolete property that needs rehabilitation, but they cannot take advantage of the tax incentive until they've made the improvements in the property, which is a really good way to incentivize somebody to actually do what they promised. And when they don't, they lose that, that, they, they lose that advantage. They, the opa closes, they are not allowed to use it. So they have to show us first that they're making the improvements in order to qualify for it and then they get the tax incentive.
Thank you. And this is our final question before we move on to audience questions, also on the topic of incentives. We'll stay with Linda on this one. The City Council created the opportunity to develop marijuana businesses in the special district and collect taxes on that business activity. I'll call those green tax dollars. These green tax dollars are an opportunity to invest in our community, our downtown or for other priorities. What would you prioritize with the use of these dollars? And as a note, these green tax dollars gain, garner roughly $260,000 annually, which is almost as much as the Downtown Development Authority's budget. So how would you prioritize, or how have you prioritized the use of, of these dollars?
Well, this is an interesting question because, not this past budget year, but the budget, the first year that we got those tax dollars, I think it was this year, I'm really nervous because I can't remember this year or last year with the budget, but the first time we got them, we had already been handed devastating news that we had a PFAS contamination problem in our dump, which is outside of our city limits. So we were concerned about that, about the cleanup and we didn't know where the money was going to come from. And then all of a sudden, this wonderful check came from the state of Michigan from, you know, resulting from the marijuana sales. So that's, that covers the new wells that we're supposed to do to, to monitor the, the contamination down in the dump. So it's going to be used, there's plenty of, there's plenty of opportunities to use it. I will also say that the state of Michigan was able to put $49 million back into the transportation fund basically, that gets distributed out to counties and cities. So that was nice to have and see that happen. Now whether that will continue to grow, I think that's going to depend largely on whether or not the, our federal government decides to just make everybody in, in the nation, every state, allowed to sell marijuana. Thank you.
And Wes, how would you prioritize the use of, of that new tax revenue?
Consider me calling it green dollars. You know, I know the city has quite a few, 27, maybe incorrect, different parks. I'd love to see that money earmarked for some park maintenance and park upgrades. It just seems rather fitting, whether you, whether you put it into a, you know, a rainy day fund or something like that. I'd like to see it put to some, to some use in parks, the, like Linda was talking about, you know, put it towards the splash pad, you know, things like that to where it's definitely community and use-based and that everybody gets to see the benefit of it. I think that's probably a, if we're going to have the Green Mile, we might as well.
I appreciate a good Green Mile reference.
Well, I, I would just like to add, the person who's proposing the 22-unit market-rate apartment building is Willie McKenzie, who owns one of the, owns one of the, he owns authentic 231 in the Green Mile. So we're glad they have him as a partner and so, so far, I think it's working out well.
Well, thank you both. That concludes the moderated portion of, of the forum and we'll move on to audience questions. And I believe Carmen has a microphone she'll be bringing around, so do we have any questions from members of the audience? Come on. Yeah, there we go.
Hello, I'm Tiana Stanley and I've lived in the community here for the past four years. And what I was wondering is how, what our community leaders are doing or other community members to bring companies to this area, our town, or even in the area that will support year-round livable wages? Because we all know that, you know, we have, we have lots of things, places for our kids to go to work in the summertime, they can work in everything down on Main Street, but what, what types of things are being done, whether in partnership with other organizations or the Chamber, to bring in, you know, manufacturing or, I'm not sure what those jobs are, but that are, that provide a livable wage so that our children will want to stay here and not go to Traverse City to work or go to Grand Martham or other big cities. I just wondered, you know, what, what kind of ideas to have for that? Go ahead, Wes.
Thanks, Linda. I, I think you, you kind of hit the answer, you said the answer. It's going to be in conjunction with, with the Chamber and, you know, there's three things that we really need to do in the city and they're kind of all, as far as priorities, you know, we have to support the businesses that are here. Part of that is, one of my, my good friends said, what has to happen is that the Chamber and the city need to figure out a way to, not interview these businesses, but make sure that they have a path forward in the dark, dark months, you know, February through, you know, June. We don't have the winters we used to. Back, back, you know, 20 years ago, a winter was a winter here. Winter started in December, it didn't end till June. Now we, we don't have the ice fish, we don't have the storm winters because the weather's so predictable. So that, that's one priority that really, that the Chamber can help with. You know, the bringing of the young entrepreneurs in, whether it's a business that has started or it's, it's a business that has been already established, we need to sell to downtown. And again, that's what the Chamber can help with. And the communication between the Chamber and the city is, I think, what will really kick that into high gear. I think at times it's not been near the communication and collaboration that there could be. And I look forward to, you know, to that changing, if I get elected.
You're doing well, so I don't know. I think the best thing we can look at is probably communities of our size who actually have the same transportation issues, I should say, that we would face in getting product in and out of this area. So that would probably be a good study for us to understand the feasibility of actually bringing a large manufacturing company here. My son-in-law works for Dr. and Gamble down in St. Louis and I, every time I see him, I bend his ear, don't you want to build a Dr. and Gamble plant up here? You can make those little Swifter things and we'd all be happy. So I think you have to use every avenue that you can, that you enter and have an opportunity to talk to somebody about that. But I absolutely agree with Wes. We do need to work with the Chamber. We absolutely want people to stay here. They're going to need full-time jobs, they're going to need stock options at some point, they're going to need 401Ks, they're going to need what people are seeking in the way of employment. And we need to figure out how to attract at least a couple of companies that'll do that.
It's quite obvious the city of Manistee is facing aging infrastructure. You know, our water system, our sewer systems, our roads. What role do you believe that the City Council, as a City Council member, that you should play in helping us to be sure that our infrastructure is properly maintained?
Well, I think we've already solved the sewer issue by putting in the new Sookville Water Waste Plant. I mean, I don't see how we can possibly fill up both, all three of those towers. That's 6 million gallons of sewage. We've never seen that kind of, those kinds of numbers. I mean, that would be an astronomical kind of it that was faster. And here's another thing, I, as far as our infrastructure goes, it's not just, oh, by the way, John, I will tell you that we don't have any roads in the city of Manistee. Cities only have streets. I needed to get that in there. I knew it was going to come up sometime tonight. So we have to understand that when we're, we're working on a street to resurface it, we're we're probably looking at the infrastructure underneath. We're looking at the water lines, we're looking at the sewer lines, and we're doing replacements. It can be very expensive to do a street. Chappell, not Chappell's. Quincy Street was one of the key streets that was causing most of the noise and deservedly so, they had been neglected, but they needed a completely overhaul. We put over a million dollars into reconstruction on Quincy Street. Now, what is our, you know, we, we get money back from the state for, for registration and taxes on fuel. I guess I've been cut off. I could, I'd love to finish answering that at some point, but.
I, I think it's a very good point. And just even talking about it and having city council aware of it. You know, I know, you know, Mr. McCullough, they're aware whenever we have a water main break, it's, it's a matter of forecasting, some, certain things you can't forecast, like a water main break or a, or a sewer break that's not expected. But absolutely with the, with the aging infrastructure, I just think it's, with, with a town of this, this age and this size, it's a matter of, there's really no easy quick answer, except just being aware of it. And I think the more the city councils can be flexible with, with some of the budget and, you know, that rainy day fund, you know, the, the, the green dollars, maybe that's something we, we put in the, in that rainy day fund or into a newer sewer fund. Because as Linda well knows, one break and you're, yeah, it's, it shuts down the whole, a good part of the city. We had one of the water, a couple of water pumps were out and then the backup water pump went out, then we had almost, almost no water. And now everything's back up. I think it's a matter of forecasting and kind of expecting and predicting where, where is the next failure gonna be and just being on top of it. And routine maintenance, which I think they do a pretty good job of.
I stole the microphone, so I think I'm gonna go. I didn't see who was talking. Thank you both for being here. I would honestly be happy with either of you, so I wish you lived in different districts and I weren't too bad, if that helps. I just wondered for each of you.
I wish that too, right now. Mind working?
Yes. Not even really know who's running my district, but, so thank you. My question is for both of you and I think it's fair given your current positions. What's your top priority for public safety and why?
Drugs. 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 We have a problem with drugs. I'm sorry. It's also in a lot of other communities. We are not alone. But this is what keeps me up and a little worried about our community. We need to really, God love our police department. They have, they're really working hard to crack down on this. But when we're talking about meth and we're talking about things that are so potentially harmful to people that they don't, that they're overdosing, they can be dying. We've had, we've had residents who have lived in the city in rental units and overdosed outside the city limits. So, please, this is a huge problem. It shouldn't be so available. I, I don't have the answer, I'm not law enforcement, but I understand that this is just, it's in all of our neighborhoods and it's something that we really need to be worried about. And I think every community in the country probably is worried about it as well. But this is a, this is a huge issue. So, that's the thing that keeps me up at night, worried about the safety of our, our people and the interaction that people have with drug dealers.
Ironically, I ran the multi-jurisdictional drug team that, that covers Manistee for about three years before I shaved and got cleaned up and now we're close up this word. And she's absolutely right, you know, drugs are a huge issue. My, what I'd really like to see and, because it's all our communities, it's in her community, it's in my street, her street, your street, kind of like the okay-to-say program. If you see something, say something. The officers that we have in the city, they are stretched thin. Nationwide, the number of law enforcement officers that have, have left the job for whatever reason happens to be is, is an all-time high. We need, we, as in law enforcement, we need your help. If you see something that's not right, call it in. That, that's, that's probably one of the biggest things because that and education, there's such a multi-passage question, question, but we need your help. It's, it's, it's our community, we need to step up and, you know, take care of it. So, that's, that's probably the best, the best short answer I can give.
I don't have nearly as much experience as, as Wes, but I can tell you, it scares me because you can manufacture methane so easily in, in crystals. So, I get worried when I see things like statistics on fentanyl being 50 times more harmful and, and to people who have taken heroin. So, those things should really be alarming to us and we should be watching out for it. So, thanks Wes for what you've done.
What could the city do? How could the city work together with state lawmakers to achieve its goals?
To me, it, it goes back to, again, the communication and collaboration. You know, we have people in this community, you know, in the Chamber and in the Commission that are very, very well-known and have, have the ability to make contact with, with lawmakers. And it's, again, it's, we all need to talk together. We all need to realize we're fighting for the same goal and whether it be city council, the Chamber, the county commissioner, it's, it's one Manistee. It's not the city, it's not the Chamber, it's Manistee, it's our community. And I think that's the biggest thing is to, is to network and use those, you know, use those connections and, and communicate with each other. That, that's the biggest thing, that's the easiest way to do it.
Are you waiting for me? I think what's important to recognize is that we don't know what Lansing's doing and they may not know what we need. So, I agree with you, communication has to be a two-way street. We really need them to come talk to us. Honestly, I would, I hate to go back to this former episode that I told you about with Dale Kildale coming to Oxford, but he came because we needed some money to build this pedestrian bridge. And he came and, he came regularly to Oxford. In fact, Mike Bishop used to come and visit the village council and he was kind of a big deal in Lansing. I think it would be nice if we could get Volnar and we could get Kirk to come and talk to us about what's going on in Lansing and Bumstead to talk to us. I think it's important that we stay in touch, either by phone or Zoom meetings with our state senators and of course, the people in the federal government. But I see that if they're not coming to talk to us, we need to maybe invite them, maybe put them up at the Hampton Inn. I don't know. I don't know what the, an answer is, but we need to actually have them come and discuss what they're working on and we have a chance to tell them what help we need from them. And that would be a good first move.
And I think, I'm so sorry, that was our last question. I did wanna give a little bit of time for closing statements, but before I say that, I do have to give a plug on the, the great question about staying in touch with state legislators and that is, what the Chamber Alliance is here to do alongside the Manistee Chamber. We will have a Manistee Government Relations Meeting, actually, tomorrow. So, if anyone has any input, please call, text, or email Stacy Bywork, all at once. She wants to hear from you. But, yeah, such a, such a great question and very happy to say that Stacy was actually appointed by the governor's office to the Grand Michigan Together Council, focused on developing ideas to bring younger members of our workforce here to Northern Michigan, well, to Michigan as a whole, but to Northern Michigan in particular. So, I, I appreciate that question as well. I did wanna give time for one-minute closing statements for each of our candidates. And so, maybe we can, can start with Wes on just a one-minute general closing statement.
I really just would like to take this time to thank you, the community, for coming out and supporting us and, and being involved in this, in the decision-making process. It all starts with you. We work for you, we are you, you are us, we're all one. It's a theme there. That's, that's huge and I wanna thank the Chamber. And you weren't as near as me as I thought you'd be, so I appreciate that. I try. And yes, that's really all and we hope to see a big turnout in November and vote for me.
Well, I would like to say, if you can't vote for me, I hope you vote for Wes. He seems like a very nice man. But I still want the job, so I'm really hoping that you will think about letting me come one more time and serve two more years. That would be my goal. And there's plenty of projects that we're still working on that I'd love to stay in touch with and keep working on. Century Terrace residents have been disenfranchised for a long time. Join working with them. I, I have a free and easy access to the building because I know so many people over there now. It's, it's, it's been a real challenge to try to get them used to a new management and try to use, lose some of the fear that they had under the old management. So, that being said, I just really appreciate this opportunity and I thank you very much, Stacy and, and Henry, it's been nice meeting you, and Mark Miller, the entire Chamber. Thank you everybody for coming out. Wes has his friends here, I have mine, and some of them are all the same people. So, that's kind of exciting to me. So, I really appreciate it and thank you and I've enjoyed meeting you.
Thank you both again. I wanna encourage everyone, there is pizza on the way out. Got it, got it. Thanks again.